Eight, nineteenth. Thank you. I'd like to call this village board meeting of April nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to order. Would the clerk please take your role?
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Muratato?
Here.
Trustee Pojak?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Here. And now we are very pleased to welcome Glenside Middle School Student Council for Students in Government Day. And now we're giving you the opportunity to take our seats and we can go relax. So if you guys would start with the pledge of allegiance and then go on with your announcements. It's all yours.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Community announcements. Trustee Schmidt?
Hi, my name is Sonia Campo. I will be filling in, I will be sitting in for trustee Schmidt. Distracted driving week. Each day, ten thousand people are killed in distracted driving crashes, contributing to the thirty-seven thousand people killed in crashes on U.S. roadways during 2016, according to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. To help bring attention to the dangers associated with driving distracted, the Glendale Heights Police Department will participate in the Illinois Distracted Driving Awareness Week and conduct an enforcement campaign of Illinois distracted driving laws during the week of April twenty-third to the twenty-seventh. For more information, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at six-three-zero-two-six-zero-six-zero-seven-zero. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Trustee Sullivan?
Hi, my name is Natalia Gonzalez and I'm sitting in for trustee Sullivan. Mother's Day brunch. The Glendale Lakes Golf Course is hosting their annual Mother's Day brunch on Sunday, May thirteenth, from ten a.m. to twelve-thirty p.m. Brunch will include a carving and omelet station, various salads, breakfast and lunch entrees, children's items, and a sweets table. Complimentary champagne and mimosas will also be available. The cost is twenty-nine for adults and fourteen-fifty for children's ages five to twelve, and children under four are free. Call today and make a reservation at six-three-zero-two-six-zero-zero-zero-nine-five. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Light?
Hello, my name is Caesar Leva and I'm sitting in for trustee Light. Coffee with the mayor and board. Join us Saturday, May fifth, at the Center for Senior Citizens from ten a.m. to noon for coffee with the mayor and the village board. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the mayor or village board, please call the mayor's office anytime at six-three-zero-nine-zero-nine five-three-zero-three. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Don Starino?
Hi, my name is Stephanie Chavez and I'm filling in for Don Starino today. Yard waste collections. Spring yard waste curbside collections are made on your regular or holiday schedule pickup days by Republic Services. All yard wastes must be placed in either biodegradable paper bags or cans clearly labeled "yard waste only." Biodegradable bags or cans must not exceed thirty-two gallons in size and fifty pounds in weight. Brush must be included in bundles not exceeding four feet in length, two feet in diameter, and fifty pounds in weight. Please remember that all single-family and multifamily residential units are required to utilize Republic Services for the collection and disposal or refuse. When placing your refuse and recycling totes outside for collection, containers are to be placed at the curbside immediately adjacent to the street without interfering or endangering the movement of vehicles. Please do not overfill your garbage or recycling bins. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Clerk Schmidt?
Hi, I'm Clerk Sanchez and I'm filling in for clerk Schmidt. To enable an efficient and effective street sweeping schedule, parking on streets is prohibited during the months of April and May. Between eight a.m. and four p.m. on various days throughout the week, color-coded no parking signs have been posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is prohibited on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, Thursday for the brown zone. To find out what zone you are, visit the village's website. For any questions for the street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at six-three-zero two-six-zero-six-zero-four-zero. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Muratato?
Hi, my name is Eric Rodriguez and I'm filling in for trustee Muratato. Spring fleeing rescheduled. Glendale Lakes Golf Club's annual spring fleeing has been rescheduled for Saturday, May fifth, with a noon shotgun start. The cost to play in the event is three hundred dollars per team or seventy-five dollars per golfer. Golfers will receive eighteen holes of golf with cart, lunch and dinner, drink ticket, raffle ticket, and a tee prize. There are only a few spots remaining, so be sure to make your reservation today by contacting Glendale Lakes Golf Club at six-three-zero-two-six-zero-zero-zero-one-eight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Pojak?
Hi, my name is Adam McLough and I'm filling in for trustee Pojak. Do you have any unwanted or old cell phones, retired U.S. flags, bikes, batteries, and other recyclables? Drop them off at the One Stop Reuse and Recycling Depot on Saturday, April twenty-first, from nine a.m. to noon. All items can be dropped off at the GH-2O Aquatic Center parking lot located at Two-Fory Civic Center Plaza. Items not accepted during hazardous waste, paint, and CFL bulbs. All television or monitors will only be accepted by purchasing a voucher from www.eescrap.org/GlendaleHeights or via credit card at the event. Please note, there will be no document readings at this event. For more information or a complete list of accepted items, visit www.GlendaleHeights.org or call six-three-zero-two-six-zero-six-zero-zero-zero. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Schroeder?
Hi, I'm Nelson Aguilar and I'm filling in for trustee Schroeder. Summer is just around the corner and the GH-2 Aquatic Center will be opening Memorial Day weekend on May twenty-sixth. Purchase your pool pass between May first and May nineteenth for discounted rates. Benefits to becoming a member include priority entrance at eleven-thirty a.m. and discounts on swim lessons, swim team registration, pool rentals, and more. For more information, contact the sports hub at six-three-zero-two-six-zero-six-zero.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jessica Verella and I am filling in for Mayor Jackson. The village of Glendale Heights is now hiring for a variety of seasonal positions at Glendale Lakes Golf Course, GH-2O Aquatic Center, Public Works, and the Parks Recreation and Facilities Department. Positions range from laborers, lifeguards, youth program counselors, and many more. Gain valuable experience and build friendships that will last a lifetime working for the village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit the village's website or contact Human Resources at six-three-zero-nine-zero-nine fifty-three fifty-seven. Thank you.
All of you did a tremendous job taking our places. Do you want to stain finish? I wish we could let you, but legally, we have to do this. But we want to thank you for taking time and interest to come and just get a little taste of what goes on at board meetings. Okay, come back, people. We each have a certificate for each of you that have taken our place. And this is for Clarissa. That's you, right? Is it you? Becky? Okay, who's Clarissa? How'd we do? Jessica? That's you. Thank you so much for taking our places. And I'm sorry I was given the wrong. Will you all come back and visit us again? Yes. You guys are our future. And now I think Mrs. Schroeder has a few words to say.
As many of you know, I'm going to retire this year, and so this is the last time that I will have the opportunity to speak before this board. So let's hope I get it right. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mayor Jackson, Deputy Mayor Sullivan, our village clerk, Marie Schmidt, and the Board of Trustees for helping me teach my student council members what it means to take an active role in local government. It is in doing that real learning takes place, and I believe this evening's experience has made a positive lasting impression on these fine young men and women. The partnership that we share would not be possible without your support. No teacher can coordinate service learning activities and experiences without the cooperation of the community. Working together to build a stronger community via your constant support and encouragement this year as in years past has made a lifelong impact on these students. The relationship that Glenside Middle School shares with the village of Glendale Heights reflects Glenside's mission to work collaboratively to ensure that every student is prepared for post-secondary success. Participating in community service project is paramount, and any student's preparation for real life. To my student council members, I would like you to remember this evening and those who made it possible. The village of Glendale Heights is more than just a town. It is a family who reaches out to one another in good times and in bad. Your mayor, village clerk, Board of Trustees, and everyone who works for the village of Glendale Heights works with one another to make this village the best it can be. They too work collaboratively and exhibit the six pillars of good character. Respect, responsibility, caring, trustworthiness, being fair, and citizenship are not just ideas spoken about at Glenside Middle School. Together, these six pillars fuel the village of Glendale Heights's engine, and Glenside Middle School is one of the many places in our village housing that fuel. Soon, some of you will graduate. We hope that you continue to take pride in the village of Glendale Heights and continue to give back through community service what this wonderful village has given to you. Now I would like to share with you one of my most favorite quotes. "I shall pass this way but once. Any good that I can do or any kindness I can show to a human being, let me do it now. Let me not defer nor neglect it, for I shall not pass this way again." So what does this mean? It means whenever an opportunity presents itself to help anyone in any way, act. And when you go to bed at night, be thankful that you found the opportunity to help. Remember, to be true to yourself. Know what your beliefs are and live them. It's not about you. It's about what you can do for others. In the final analysis, the quality of a person's life is not measured by what he or she has accumulated for him or herself. It is what has been shared, given freely, with no strings attached and no thank you is expected. Take your responsibilities seriously. Do not give anyone any reason not to trust you. Treat others with the respect with which you want others to treat you. Play fair. Lead a caring, compassionate, lend a caring, compassionate hand to those in need, and don't question why. Live the six pillars of character counts every day, one pillar at a time, and follow the examples of your parents and community leaders. Do these things and strive to be the best you can be.
Excuse me. Jenny? This is for you. And Laura, I know this isn't your first one. I hate that it's your last one. It's a great loss to District sixteen, but you have definitely earned a wonderful retirement. And I know you're still going to be around to help all of us.
I will.
So you kids, you'll be seeing her. She might be leaving school officially, but she's still going to be around.
The environment changes, the passion doesn't.
Thank you so much again.
Thank you.
Now it's our turn again.
You'll be missed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Caesar likes the chair.
Thank you so much. And I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. You guys come back and see us, okay?
Thank you.
I just want to thank all of you again. And to tell you how long, far back I go with Mrs. Schroeder is she was a teacher for my children and now some of my grandchildren and no great-grandchildren yet, but she's totally, totally an awesome, caring teacher. So thank you again. And now we will move on with our board meeting.
Linda?
Yes.
Can I say something?
Yes, Chester.
Regarding Mother's Day, it's ten a.m. to two-thirty p.m., not ten a.m. to twelve-thirty p.m. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we've had our community announcements. Wonderful job. So Bill, you didn't get to go first tonight.
Yes, you promised.
First thing on my agenda is to call for a special meeting on April twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, to discuss and approve the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen budget. And I believe that's at the senior center? Okay. At what time?
Six p.m.
Six p.m., Mayor.
Okay. At six p.m., everybody got that? Okay. We have three proclamations tonight. First is a proclamation to proclaim April twenty-second as Earth Day. Next is a proclamation to proclaim April twenty-seventh as Arbor Day. And the third is a proclamation to proclaim May first, two thousand and eighteen, as Crossing Guard Appreciation Day. So if there are no objections, I will sign these proclamations. Thank you. And now Keith, I see you're all ready for our Arbor Day Foundation?
I am. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For having an opportunity to speak on the Tree City USA and Arbor Day. I know I do this every year, and it's always a great opportunity for me and for my department to talk a little bit about trees. So I want to start off by talking about the Tree City USA program. The Tree City USA program is sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation, and basically, it recognizes urban and community forestry programs. And in the United States, there are thirty-four hundred cities and towns that have been recipients of this, and Glendale Heights is one of one hundred and seventy-four from Illinois. Now Arbor Day celebrations come forward here, and we talked about Arbor Day being, you just passed a proclamation about Arbor Day being on Friday, April twenty-seventh. And Arbor Day is a nationally celebrated observance that encourages tree planting and care. Founded by J. Sterling Morton in eighteen-seventy-two, is celebrated each year on the last Friday in April to coincide with the best tree planting times. I'm not sure that's the case this year, but that's what it's supposed to be. Obviously, that'll be on Friday, the twenty-seventh. And how we celebrate Arbor Day is that on Friday, April twenty-seventh, the Parks Division, along with the Glendale Heights preschool students, will celebrate Arbor Day by planting trees on the village campus. And our PATH after-school students will also participate in exercises to learn the benefits of the trees and their role in the environment. Now, we have a couple of pictures from last year of the trees being planted out in front of the sports hub. Obviously, all the kids there, and everybody gets a chance to put some water on the tree and get it planted and everything going. And then our PATH program and what they're able to do, learning out, this time they were out in Veterans Park doing their tree work. So this year, we were again the proud recipient of the Tree City USA Award for the twenty-first year. And that is something that wouldn't have been possible without the board and your direction in making sure that we're reforesting our tree population after the Emerald Ash Bore and having that opportunity. So we want to thank you, and without you, that wouldn't have been possible. And we did just actually get their award. Chuck received the award just two weeks ago. So we are now in possession of our twenty-first Tree City Award. So if you have some time on Arbor Day, please stop on out over at the sports hub to see us planting some trees. We'd love to have you and love to have you see what we're going to put together for, and the activity for the kids. They're going to have some necklaces, and we'll probably be bringing them just to show everybody what we did after Arbor Day. So we'll do that at the first meeting in May. But that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith, and congratulations. And receiving the Arbor Day Award for Tree City again. Next thing on the agenda is I have some appointments to make to our youth commission. Those appointments being Doug Flint, Chief Police, Village of Glendale Heights; Joe Williams, Queen Bee School, District sixteen. Would be new appointments to the youth commission. If there are no objections?
None.
Thank you. These are reappointments to the youth commission, and they are Tanya Mako, Chair, who is from the Glendale Heights Police Department; Chester Pojak, trustee; Mary Schroeder, trustee; Michelle Cahill, Police Department; Joe Dubek, Chicago Blower; Russ Wood, Chief Glenside Fire Department; Chris Mitchell, from Glenbard West; Deborah Cartwright, from Glenbard North; Antoine Anderson, from Glenbard East; Nick Cosiera, from Glen Allen Countryside Civic Organization; Mary Ellen Graff, from Markwood School, District fifteen; Kevin Hooper, from Queen Bee School, District sixteen; Lisa Grigsby, from Glen Oaks Hospital and School; Phil Depew, from the Village of Glendale Heights; and Vince Slavansky, from Glenside Library. So a motion would be in order to concur with all these appointments. Trustee Muratato?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I want to thank all these people that are on the youth commission for their years of service and for the new ones for their years to come of service. Thanks. Okay. Next, we go to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, you have the consent agenda before you. What is your pleasure? Trustee Sullivan?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Muratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. We have no old business. New business, number one, is a motion to waive first reading on new business item number two. Trustee Schroeder?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Opposed?
First reading is waived. Number two, which is an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement with Duquesne Asphalt Company for roadway materials for the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading has been waived, so this is ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-two. Trustee Muratato?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mike?
Just one quick question. Is this just for our Fullerton Avenue project, or is this for all projects throughout the entire village?
This would be for the general asphalt use for our Department of Public Services, not Fullerton Avenue, throughout their projects through the next construction season.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Muratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-two is approved. Number three is an ordinance rejecting all bids for the purchase of one Peterbilt three-fourty-eight truck with aerial lift body. This is first reading, and no discussion. We're now back to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, a motion would be in order to recess and go into the committee of the whole. Trustee Pojak?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are recessing and going to do the committee of the whole and come back to adjourn our board meeting. So Bill, it's all yours.
The committee of the whole of the Village of Glendale Heights Governing Board is for Thursday, April nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, is called to order. Clerk Schmidt, would you make a note of who's present, please?
Noted.
Thank you. Are there any additions to the discussions this evening? Okay, none. Is there any public comment? of flammable liquids such as raw paints, sealers, and varnishes located at the 501 Mitchell Road. This will be the Molessey wood coatings.
Thank you. The Plan Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the conditional use for the flammable liquids facility. Molessey wood coatings has a small training facility and storage of wood coatings, and they do training of people wanting to know how to put it on, and then they'll go back and be contracted out. This is for small batches of the wood coatings. The fire district reviewed it and has no concern with it. They would need to go through the building permit process for interior alteration.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Sullivan?
I'll move it to the board.
We need some discussion here first.
Oh, sorry.
Trustee Muratato?
Yeah, I wasn't at the Plan Commission, but is this going to be all enclosed?
Yes.
A wooden fence or cyclone or...
Within the building. So it's not outside stored, yes.
Okay, that's not how I'm reading it, but okay. All right, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, Trustee Sullivan?
Okay. Motion to move it to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this is carried and will be moved to the board with a recommendation to concur. There being no further items, we have a... Trustee Sullivan?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
I'd like to call this village board meeting back to order. Back to public discussion of agenda items. Thank you. Good night. And there is no public left to ask a question. So a motion would be in order to adjourn to executive session to discuss pending litigation and probable or imminent litigation pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120/2C11. That is number one on the list. Number two, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline of a specific employee pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120/2C1. And the third topic is deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees pursuant to the Open Meetings Act ILCS 120/2C2. Chester?
So moved.
You don't want to read that again?
No. You did a good cap.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Muratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned to executive session. Thanks, good night.
Thanks, guys, thank you.